Ready?
Alright.
What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna be looking at the little hand history from yesterday, a little fun day fun game. Let's go.
I wanna run my hand history, so better ticket.
Raise, 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 raise. What do we do here? We call. Nothing, next. We're gonna try to do a fast one. Here, oh interesting, I think it's a big bet, but we're so multi-weighted, it's probably not a big bet, right? So it's probably like.
It's a check.
I'm not gonna check guys, I'm sorry.
So here's the thing.
Probably quarter pot.
It's one of your, it's your worst days, you might have eight, seven. And you're against three people, so why would you wanna bet?
Because we have cop pair.
Clear out some roadways.
What eight does he have when he plots? Not very much eight, right?
Which is a big blind, this smashes the big blind, it's the small blinds got the all the meddling suited stuff, he's got ace eight suited probably.
I remember somebody on here a few months ago saying that you should check if you're not last to act in a multi-way pot. I wonder who that was?
Okay, so it's not even a normal hand actually. You raise. And the black is not here. But when I see this, I'm like, this guy doesn't have much eight, he could show me a save, but there's nothing, right? Not much eight here, not much eight here. I mean, so probably gonna bet. Yeah. Usually if I was at up, I would size up here, but you know, multi-way, I sized down a little bit. Okay, we get that, we get another eight.
Now we could pull her.
Oh, I think now I don't wanna polarize cuz he almost never has an eight here.
Hearing him too good of a price for a flush draws.
I don't think he has much of a flush draw either.
No, you don't think he has much anything.
Yeah.
He's calling.
If he's not calling with a flush draw, what is he calling with? Pocket tens.
I don't know.
Maybe.
You don't think he's raising pocket tens pre-flop?
Yeah. Seven sixes could be. Can we get this here?
If you polarize better, you have a better shove on the river.
This is like such a, yeah, like, I don't know, there's nothing too interesting about this hand, it's a very standard spot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You like your C bet on the flop, Galen?
Eh, I, eh, it's one of those things, it's, you can take it or leave it.
It's not great, but it's not bad, I'm sure.
It's not bad, it's not, I, I, I don't really have a huge opinion on it, like, I mean, sure, your eight needs a little protection. Um, the sandwich player in the middle, multi-way does check more, like, I could take it or leave it.
That's like our worst date.
Yeah, it probably is. I don't think it's making a big mistake either way. He's got pocket fives, that's the only reason this would have been saved.
Five, three.
Five, three, okay, he's got a five. Yeah, I don't know, this is like, it's just out of range, this guy's like a fish for being in there. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know how he calls turn.
This hand is really weird, like, they're like limp and then everything goes around and then, no, no, no.
Guy just looks at five, three, and then he gets caught up in something.
This is not, like, this isn't a real situation, I.
He only had a call. Yeah, he had a call two bigs. And a left pot.
Yeah, but bros in Disneyland playing five, three.
Welcome to Disneyland.
Not unreasonable, I don't think.
I, I, I mean.
You would someone shows up with five, three, that's every day.
I'm not surprised. Maybe my turn size is weak, right?
Yeah, I like about five there.
Hmm, I'll check back, maybe it's a flop.
But any, anytime he calls and you've got quads, it's a good thing, right?
Yeah, oh.
Nice. Yeah, I didn't think he was gonna call much more than pot and I, yeah. Was lucky, I think I got this call.
So this is how you, uh, make the FT, you get quads and then you get aces.
Well, though, they're filtered by, by.
I, I know, I'm just, I'm trolling.
I like the big bet once it goes check, check.
So yeah. Here I wanted to check raise, I think.
Yeah, I like check raise.
After it goes check, check, I'm like, okay.
I think in silver, we can even go bigger.
Maybe?
Yeah, I think we could overbet in silver.
And then it goes eight, nine, ten? Hmm, hmm, I'm like, yeah.
That's not great.
Not a big bet, I think.
Yeah, he shouldn't have king, he shouldn't have queen jack though, if you bet big on the turn.
Not a big bet.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I like how you play it.
Pocket fives? We call?
I'm, I'm pretty, like, uh, to Louis's point, I don't think queen jack can call that turn bet, right?
Yeah, 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 that's what I was thinking, it's too big.
Pocket deuce?
Someone might, someone might die.
Until they lose?
Can you, can you cool, um, can you fold a pair there to a small pair?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Me here?
I mean.
Ask Ken, ask Ken if I can fold here.
I mean, MDF's a thing, I know you're like.
Can I keppel? Oh, he's not watching. Can you fold here?
On the flop?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I think, I think you can fold twos, dude.
The power, the power of fuck it one, call one.
You can call six, you can call eight. Like, like fives maybe.
So, uh, what is this? Is this a hand history?
It is.
Of who? Is it your hand history from yesterday?
Yes.
Yeah, he, he skipped some, he didn't bother.
Somebody, somebody called it perfectly. I think daddy was talking about this, yeah. It's good though.
Who called what?
Oh, we're streaming some tables last night. We had some deep runs. And daddy was like, we're probably gonna do Louis' big score from yesterday, so it's good.
Make fun of you, I'll pay when you're not around.
A li- a little bit, not too much.
I probably bet school here.
I, I, I'm okay with this, I would probably. I mean, if I was really being nitpicky, I would lean small because you have the ace of clubs, but I think, I think this is fine.
Add with the flush draw board, it's gonna be a big bet board. On a queen ten border, I think you can bet large.
Yeah, it's, like I said, take it or leave it, it's nitpicky, like, you're talking minimal differences.
See, I probably, I probably bet this, but like, I think checks perfectly fine.
Cards for sure, barrel and right, diamonds probably the next most amount and maybe the other one's less, or the opposite, I don't know, it suits.
Raise here ever?
Hmm.
You're probably not checking back sets though.
I would like a raise there though.
Yeah, but you're probably not checking back sets, that's the thing.
Yeah.
I hate how he played, I think he played it fine.
Yeah.
You could see bet that flop, but.
I don't mind betting here either, to be honest.
Oh, that's not good, right?
Nah.
So you. Don't wait at showdown, they got draws.
See bet and then I called this.
Yeah, but it's a three-way pot, it's not heads up.
And that grades, right?
Yeah, I think it's a stretch for a three-way pot.
Uh, not closing the action and a person to act behind on a board like this, I would. I don't know, man, I would probably fold, they could be betting hearts, but eh.
Do we, did we, we didn't call the turn, right? We just folded the turn?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
No, we did call the turn, we folded the river, I think.
That's alright.
Hmm.
But the, the, the correct place to fold it.
Okay.
I did. Okay, so Ray, Ray's call, we get this, check, bet.
I like small here, I think small, it's gonna be very difficult for him to continue and you basically have a nut.
He shouldn't have any fours, many fours corner opposition and you block the ones he should have. Like ace four, that's the only.
Maybe a suited ace for a king four.
Yeah, yeah, but we have an ace, he shouldn't even have king four.
Wait, he was a good call.
He was big. He was big blind? Oh, small blind, nevermind, yeah.
Yeah.
This guy. Yeah, call brief now, not a fan of this call, but whatever, I did it.
Why would you, why would you three bet this? I think this is a great call.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're forty, you're forty effective, you can't call a four bet, like, this is right in the, the meaty part of the calls.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the bottom, you can't even three bet that much, to be honest.
So we get this, the big blind leads and us, so we're like, yeah.
First the hijack, I think suited nines.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think you're right, Joey.
I thought you wanted a three bet more with your offsuit stuff. Um.
Around forty.
There's gonna be some suited draws as well.
So. Um.
When you squeeze, it's more of the suited stuff, right?
Yeah.
It is, it is, you're right, Ken. If there had been one more call, it had made a pretty decent squeeze.
Oh, he was already past the head, I looked at it, the hand after, I guess, cuz I'm loading something up.
Beautiful.
Were you, were you up against jacks? Oh, it's king.
He's up against free money, enjoy.
He was so happy on the turn.
Jack a bit loose, depends on the table.
Did I say that here?
This is a range bet board.
With the queen?
Uh, it's a PKO as well, right?
No.
No.
Oh, it's not?
No PKO.
This is range betting, I would definitely range bet this.
I need to.
I mean, if you had a check in your range, I don't hate this as a, as a check, but I, I don't know, I, I play. I think I play a range bet on king queen.
I, I, I play, I play range bets.
Gotta be a range bet smaller.
Especially against the big blind.
Does the fact that he holds a heart makes any difference?
It would make me more inclined to see bet.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought.
Then we can call a check raise then, if we had old heart, easier.
Yes, that's right, Roger.
Alright, so he leads pop on the.
If you check the flop, this, I mean, it's like a very easy call.
This, this is near.
Oh, oh.
Louis, what, what better hands do you check?
What do you think pot like this?
I'd probably just fold two.
If you check flop and cap your range, you gotta call.
You guys are insane if you're ever thinking about folding this hand, if you check the flop. You checked to protect the equity of this hand, not to just check fold it.
Are you, are you there calling pot bets?
There's, oh, absolutely with this, there's two flush draws available, he could be doing this with like ace four of spades, like, there's all kinds of stuff.
I mean, this is the, you're supposed to bet big when it goes check, check here as well.
You should, exactly.
Probably if the, if turns a nine or an ace, I probably would fold.
Yeah, we gotta run this one.
I mean.
But we sort of put ourselves in a pickle here by checking back, right? I don't even think this is close, I don't even think this is.
I don't think there's much to discuss here, I'm just, you missed the bet.
Yeah, yeah, put it, I mean, I don't even, I'm, I'm kind of indifferent about that, but like, talking about folding the turn seems crazy to me.
Okay, zero percent check.
Zero point dot, yeah, it's like.
That was great. Black trades here.
And then zero percent fold on the turn.
Okay.
Look at the EV on the turn, it's gotta be like huge. We're talking like five plus or something, it's gotta be like a silly number.
Plus Rex, when you check, when you're supposed to bet a lot and you check, uh, that's when regs feel, um, empowered to start bluffing, even ones, people that don't bluff that much.
Yeah, you've captured yourself, right, usually.
And it's a double flush board, double flush draw board. Queen is, I like. On this flop, what other hands are you checking? Other than maybe pocket kings?
I mean, even kings like that here.
Hmm.
Uh. Oh, king, king, jack of hearts.
I think there's.
Yeah, there's no checking, right?
There's no checking, yeah, baby.
No checking and mostly big betting.
Hmm.
Oh, is the flop that big?
Oh, it is, it is all red, there is no green.
It's better than every, it's better than every size.
Yeah, but close with it? Okay.
Overbet with the aces, wow.
Yeah, overbet with the aces cuz you unblock. Yeah, compares.
Okay, so we butchered that one.
Did you fold the turn?
I feel like you, you, you timed out, cuz I know you don't miss a bet like that, honestly.
Who knows? So on the turn, he goes five into five, right? So the.
Yeah, yeah, he found a, he found a good bet, so give him like a, uh, a fiver and see like. If you're even folding second pairs, you're gonna have some second pairs in your range, you'd have to, right? Yeah, it's like. You don't really have five, I, I mean, like ace five you're calling.
Queen jack.
Ace, ace queen's kind of indifferent, actually, that's kind of interesting. But you're, you're, you're really just playing with fumes here.
Yeah.
But also with the double flush draw board, the ace high hearts and. A lot of the bluffs are gonna come from ace of hearts, ace of spades. That's probably why we might be folding some of those on the turn.
Sure, yeah, that seems reasonable.
Okay, and here is having hearts a good or bad, or it doesn't matter?
I think front door flush draw stuff is probably gonna be, um. Maybe better than the back door, I don't know, what, what, you'd have to look at his big betting construction on the turn, I guess.
Better, it's better to have a heart.
Yeah.
Okay, so I butchered that one.
Oh, yeah, dude, I hate. Earlier in the tournament, the better, that's for sure. Yeah, I do agree with that.
Imagine not playing perfect, geez.
Oh, he was all in, okay.
Yeah, get flushed, and he gets four flushed.
Uh, this is fold.
Uh, yeah, I'm folding this.
A pretty cool, like, what, ace, ace suited and ace nine?
Ace nine.
I'm gonna look at the guy's HUD, and if I think he's jamming wide enough, I would call ace nine.
Is he from Brazil?
Yeah.
Oh.
Any, oh, it's just good, just.
This feels.
It's a tad loose.
This feels like you're like miles wide pre-flop compared to like your, your turn, which was miles tighter. It's like two different players. Like, maybe he was right. Two completely different players.
Yeah, I think ace eight off suit plus, no, no, ace eight suited plus, ace nine off suit plus, and then like pocket fives plus on the pair side.
It's twelve big blinds, man, are you guys really folding?
Fourteen.
Yeah. Look at you, kitchen queens over here, that's fourteen! And it's from the hijack.
Listen.
Twenty-five percent of your stack.
Alright, let's put it in chips real quick, how much of a starting stack is that? Is that like? Not much.
I'm not.
Does it matter?
It does matter. So.
This is the, hang on, this is the monster stack, right?
So it's. Oh, the monster, I, 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 yeah, I can't speak.
No, 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 it might be, yeah, no, it's fifty, look at this.
It's fifty or twenty-five, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yeah, it's fifty.
So. This has gotta be approaching, if it's fifty, this has gotta be. I don't know, like, a few levels from the end of registration?
One thousand, two thousand, five hundred, hmm, good question, right?
What does it start with? You start with five hundred big blinds, or, or two fifty big blinds, or?
I think you only start with, uh, one hundred big blinds or something, or two hundred big blinds.
It's, they call it monster stack, but the blinds start pretty high.
Uh, so. You guys are all. Yeah.
Yeah, bro, I'm not, I'm definitely not calling this.
No. Geez. My wrong.
I guess ten plus here.
What is he hijack?
Hijack.
It's just suited blue ways and better races.
I mean.
And this is a balanced range, like, I'm not gonna give, let's look at the hijack jam range real quick, just for, uh, for funsies.
I was quite a bit off, to be honest.
And if it's getting near the end of the registration, you're closer using a fifty percent ICM.
Yeah, Joey, Joey's not wrong about that either. Now, look at this, like, I, I don't know if I'm giving bro jack nine, nine, ten full frequency here, I mean, some players do find that.
You know, I mean, he shouldn't be shoving the full, the, the small pairs, yeah, like.
And then obviously there are some players who don't have a split range here, they, they just shove it or fold.
That's kind of what's going on here.
A what? A little ten of a call?
Yeah, I'd call it wide. But you, uh, I mean, turned out alright, or no, it did not turn out alright, you got, you got punished.
Yeah.
It's a PKO too, so if the guy has anything more than a mid bounty, you're really gonna be incentivized to. It's not a.
This is vanilla.
Oh, no. Yeah, I like calling here, I, I would pay attention to the fact they opened three X a little bit more, yeah, this, okay, I, I. I like your, uh, I like your call a little bit more now from earlier, like, maybe you had a read on this guy, like, he was marked.
Was that the same guy, yeah, then I said, sure.
Yeah, cuz he's doing some, this is, that's kind of ridiculous, but. Teach their own.
Not the same guy.
Oh, it's not the same guy, okay.
Okay, that's.
But he had four, six. Yeah, I was like, why would he jam here?
Well, he's not gonna win unless he bats. Geez.
Yeah, not a great jam.
Almost had you though.
Then they put a four out there, I was like, oh no. Oh no. Oh no.
I'll be screwed by GG. Six, my case.
Don't do it to me, GG.
That always do.
So somebody generously gave you back the stack you lost.
Do you see that or not?
Uh, super condensed board, you can probably play check.
With bottom pair?
Would you like, would you like to bet it, Greg?
No, 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 I, I'm, I'm asking, like, I don't think I, I don't think I would be betting with bottom pair, I think I would just be checking.
I'm with you there, there are some textures where you do bet bottom pair, but this is really condensed, it merges very well with this call range. And your bet range.
You wanna bluff catch on the turn with bottom pair here, right?
Yeah, I'm kind of with you, Pete.
It's just a tough spot.
What a nice guy.
Yeah, see, it was good check and you, and then. You get him. Where he needed to be got.
Nice roll.
Yeah, if you don't check here on the flop, hmm.
Yeah, cuz we, we bet there on the flop, he probably raises us and.
And then it's over.
It's over.
See that small king I born?
Yeah, I like this.
Pocket deuce, never lose?
I don't like the call, what is he doing here? Like, do you really think he's jamming?
What do you mean? Are you gonna fold fourteen?
Bro, I'm, I'm folding twos and threes and maybe fours if he's got nitty stats.
Okay, so what kind of equity your deuces have?
Versus threes, fours, fives? Absolutely. Nothing.
But.
Bro, I might, I might even fold this pre with the two reshock stats.
To avoid the spot, right, Louis? Yeah, I mean, I've started folding twos, threes and fours in the cutoff.
We'll be near end of late reg at this point, right? It's just like, it's just not that good anymore.
And you're gonna have a lot of people in here, the, these characters who think they can skip the line in the tournament, they show up last second of the tournament. And then they're like, I'm just gonna show up and, uh. You know, make the money, I don't, I don't understand like why people would do that, but. You gotta deal with those, Louis, and deuces, deuces are just not gonna hold up.
Especially if there's any sort of risk premium.
We're gonna hit a set here anyways on the flop, so it doesn't really matter, I think, right? He's gonna get hard punished, he's gonna get hard punished here. Yeah. Was it like even me last night when I folded fours in the cutoff, when we're at two tables, I'm just sort of like, yeah, just don't, don't wanna get jammed on. I just don't like those small pairs in the cutoff.
Where are you gonna need it, you're gonna need like a fifty percent field, chill.
I mean, you could look, yeah, but you could even look at, uh, the, the equilibrium one, and if it's like.
I mean, it's gonna be in there.
In equilibrium, it's going to be in there, there's no way that, no, it's not. It's just, but in practice, like, I don't think it's, I don't, I am never doing this. But this is why LP is a LP.
Alright, get, get to the, get to the conclusion of it, we've been lingering around the twos for a while.
Is it, if you play enough, you'll get lucky and big something.
Or just holding and say it's queen, I guess.
I mean, he, he had fifty-five percent?
Just at the buff.
We're just lucky the board didn't pair.
I'd be screaming in the Discord if I lost the deuces here. I have, me too.
Let out the, the Danielle.
Weren't we cut off?
Yeah.
You're gonna have to make it deeper because you're just jamming small pairs from the cutoff. You, eh, maybe you can find an asymmetrical stack, I don't know. I don't even know if it's worth looking.
I saw a bit where it was starting to fold, when you get to like twenty big for next. And see, look, twenty, twenty, it's not even raising. Yeah, I think fold pre is just the best play, to be honest, with the two reshocks.
Why are we still clicking around on two deuces here?
Galen, fold or, fold or, uh, open.
LP, are you, uh, muted?
I feel like he is.
My mic was off, I've been talking mad shit.
Okay, start all over again, duck, duck, duck deuces.
I was like, bucket deuce, there's no one calling here.
I mean, I could take it or leave it, I kind of like what Louis said about folding it because you don't wanna get jammed on. Or, I mean, I don't know, man, I do, I do weird shit sometimes, I, I'll limp this sometimes in these spots. So same, limp it.
If, if the guy's three bet is above, is above nine percent, this is fine, if the guy's three bet is below like seven percent, this is terrible.
There you go, there you go, I agree, I agree, Pete.
How deep are we in the tournament?
You're not gonna have stats on him, I don't think.
We're twenty-five hands deep. What I called? I thought it was a fine call. See bet? You called.
I like the, I like the C bet, and I am polarized, well, you can't polarize, he's got no freaking chips, you gotta check. Or you bet super small again, I don't know what the heck you do.
Second. Uh, checking on?
See, if he was deeper, this is a spot where I might like triple off sometimes.
I always bet the king for sure, and then the heart.
Yeah. This is fine. Um.
We're just checking range here.
This is a tricky one, man, because like his flating range has like eight X smoked here. Like, he, he's gonna have nines, tens, jacks in this. But.
You're not gonna like this.
I don't hate this.
No, check range, it's.
I don't think people slap nines against me, honestly.
Well, maybe not, I don't know, some people do, some people don't, I, I don't hate this, Louis, I, I mean, this is kind of whatever, like, it's a vulnerable hand and protecting your equity is. Probably not.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if the guy's a wreck and just cool him with any nonsense, I think it's good to get protection. But if it's a strong range, I think just check range.
And you could bet smaller because you have the backdoor flush draw.
And they were folding threes?
Arnie.
The ace eight was more interesting than the deuces.
Called the jam, but you folded the tree back.
I'm joking. Just giving you a hard time. Threes are better than twos.
He's three betting. You know, people never bluff on their three bet. But King eye, we see that. Better than date. Yeah, I was like, not sure about this at all.
Uh, I think it's a really good fold, like, um.
Like this guy, I, I thought he was really wide. But okay.
Even if he is wide, I mean, you have Jack ten, you're just gonna get smoked there if you're not careful.
Bucket queens? That's one?
Uh, I would. You know? How do you approach this?
Can, I think checking is probably better, but I like to mess around a little bit.
I'd bet two point five.
Do you guys, how do you guys? How do you guys feel about like giving a clicky raise here? Did they, did they, I'm sorry, I missed the action. You bet one.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, this is probably fine.
Then follow the same line. You bet one, then you bet eighty percent pot, whether you hit or not.
Why would you bet eighty percent pot? What are they, uh, how are they gonna continue with? Anything other than a queen here? And you have a full house, like you, you have everything locked up like.
Yeah, this is definitely a bet. This is definitely a bet like forty percent.
But you're genius if one of them's got a queen.
I mean, bro, I would be betting like three big blinds here.
Yeah, I, I think.
Do you got check?
Like in general, you bet big on the double flush board, uh, the flush draw boards, but not when there's a full house.
Alright, well.
You actually size down.
I don't know about that. I still feel like it's over, it's at least over half pot, I think.
Maybe I'm crazy, right? But this is a, a loop that I will go through every time. I will bet one every time, whether I have it or not here. And then on the turn, I will bet eighty percent pot, whether I have it or not. Because when they call the one, they cap themselves, they never have a queen. They never have release on anything good. They just call. And then here, they release, so I just eighty percent every time.
You just walked through it perfectly. They've capped themselves. They don't have anything. The words came out of your mouth and you have a full house. And there's two flush draws.
Yeah.
This is multi-way. That's the only reason why I would strike. I don't think you have to really go eighty percent three-handed.
But I do it when I have it because I do it when I don't have it every time.
So you're leveling yourself because you're believing this fairy tale that you have to be balanced against some guy that you're probably never gonna play again with.
I don't have to be balanced here. It's just my line.
But yeah, that's the reason when you say that you do it with your trash, you do it with your value too.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's the simplification in my game. I'll have twenty tables here. I'll do it twenty times, no problem.
It's a disaster if we get two holes here, right? It's a disaster.
Most of the time here, I'll have nothing.
Like three-handed, you're gonna, you're gonna double that? You're gonna do this multi-way? When you get called twice?
It's just a, a scenario where I start from a pair board.
Heads up, it makes sense to me.
It's the same. It's not the same. I'm just a little bit reckless. I do it multi-way the same as if I'm heads up.
Oh, so you're.
I just think if the guy's got ace, if, if the guy's got ace four of diamonds here. Like, uh, and you throw like nine big blinds and he's in, and you're ending the near of registration. The guy's got thirty bigs almost. He can coast in the money in his mind.
Yeah.
Like, uh, I just kinda would wanna put like his value portions that are non-queens in a more difficult spot, I guess.
Yeah. But all, all I'm saying is, I want them to release most of the time. Now it's multi-way, so it's most like, more likely maybe someone has a little something. Then, in the majority of the cases, I'm here with nothing.
Hold on a second. This, did this three, seven, O guy open or did it limp? The check to you on the flop?
Louis on the flop.
I'm not even sure which one to bet.
He bet one. I think betting one on a board like this is pretty, pretty good. I think it's fine. Yeah, yeah, you get a lot of clean, honest information back. It's hard to defend on.
They're not, they shouldn't fold anything hardly.
Well, they're not solvers.
So that nine, he puts it in. Oh.
Four DTO.
So he puts it in with king ten of diamonds. Why do you wanna see detail, Ken?
I don't think you have a one big blind bet here, honestly.
Does DTO have one big blind as an input?
I don't know.
It does not. It will have a small bet.
You think?
Yeah.
Why would you do anything other than a small bet here on like a paired queen board with a deuce?
Like if you wanna look at theory of tomorrow, you probably need a.
Those, that's a look at this, cuz this really, I don't think she checked through, right?
Uh, I don't know.
Free swap razor could check. The guy in the sandwich can check. It, it should check to Louis a fair.
Yeah, I, I was thinking like, it seems pretty typical to check.
Forty percent, thirty percent.
Forty percent what?
Checks, twenty, thirty percent checks, twenty-five, thirty percent, something like that.
This hand?
Now for the opener.
Um, no, like it's, he's multi-way out of position on a flush draw board. The flush draw board's gonna drive up his checking frequency. Because when you get flatted twice behind, the people are more flush draw oriented.
So I got it in, I won.
So do you think the guy with twenty-seven and a half big blinds puts his chips in with a, uh, naked king high flush draw there?
I don't know. I'd be interested to see, cuz like I'm not, I would bet that flop a lot, and I might be wrong. So I don't really care what LP's doing here. I'm kinda curious what we do from the other spot.
Think this guy got induced here, cuz I don't see a good reason to put it in with king ten of diamonds here.
He might just have a queen.
Just a queen that checks.
Twenty percent draw like, uh, like he has nothing. Right?
Because he knows that, he knows that you're blasting on this paired board. You're up to no good like eighty percent of the time. King high is a value call.
Exactly. And he's, he might be trying to make me fold here. And it looks weird.
Bro, what are you talking about?
He's gonna make you, he's gonna make you fold for, uh, three extra chips.
He was joking, tongue in cheek.
What do you guys think he's doing with king ten of diamonds here? He's off his mind. He's off his mind. He's just like, uh, he's not falling for my BS here is what he's saying. He's like, here. They love to raise me on that turn. Usually it works, though. Alright, anyway.
Guys, we're too tight with that nine-nine hand, by the way. It's gonna jam.
What nine-nine hand?
Oh, you're supposed to jam?
Yeah.
This is nine-nine.
Can you send me the range?
Still running. I'll wait till it's done. Eights, big, sevens even mixed, sixes even mixed, but they're like, like sixes are slower, sevens more, eights. Even more nines are almost full. And then tens are full. What do you do here?
Are we folding?
Actually. Probably just call here.
Actually, the nineteen guy's got nothing, right?
Wait.
You, you open under the gun, you get flatted by under the gun one. And the button jams for twenty. This is probably like the best hand I'm folding, I think.
Yeah.
Bottom of the call, Ace queen, offsuit or Ace queen suited?
I'm gonna call Ace queen, I think. I'm not loving it, though.
What's the, the jam range for eight plus, ace, jack suited plus? Maybe ace jack off if he's splashing.
Folding, cuz you got this guy to worry about.
It's the same stack basically. I would rejam or fold.
I like folding, personally.
So you're saying that?
I'm going knit.
Louis not gonna fold, is he?
Not folding the suited.
Oh, wow. He cools up the deuces.
There's only one reason why.
I love that line. He goes off with deuces and he folds this.
If you don't have that flatter under the gun one, are you calling?
That's he.
I, I think people in twenty-five hour buy-ins for the most part aren't flating big pairs.
Okay, I think I know what's going on here.
They're not flating ace, king enough. They're not flating ace, queen enough.
So here I open under the gun, right? And he calls, so that's already two pretty strong ranges, right?
Yeah.
Then he jumps. Okay, so when he jumps into under it again, open, I think he's pretty strong. He's not afraid of ace, jack.
It's gonna be a pair a lot, tens, stuff like that, jacks, queens, kings. Ace, getting ace queen, maybe.
I like this. I was gonna think, I thought you were gonna jam it, but I, I like that line a lot more. Cuz you still get value from his polar components that are gonna limp jam sometimes. I like this. This is good.
I probably just checked there, to be honest, but.
I like this. This is good. Uh, okay, I'm putting my chips in.
You have to.
I'm pretty sure I am as well.
What's, what stage?
You could look at the chips and.
I can only imagine this folding with like high RCM.
I guess it's a good point, man. If you are approaching like the stone bubble, maybe I do fold, but I think it's fine. In most cases, that's good.
Ace four?
That was neat.
Yeah, cool.
Well, a, a, again, if it's near the bubble, I'm never calling this, but if it's like post-bubble.
Not both bubble, I think.
He's jamming any suited ace, man.
So how many? It's seven point five big blinds, and how many chips does that equate to? If we know a starting stack is.
If some people jam their ace X way too wide here, if he's jamming all suited aces, a ton of all suits. Ace is worse than ace ten, it's an easy call, I think. If he's jamming like ace five, oh, ace six, oh, ace seven, oh, all the suited aces.
This is, uh, this has gotta be post-money. It's gotta be post-money. He has a, he has like, um, at least two starting stacks and it's seven point five. Yeah, maybe you can see it. No, you gotta hit the other tab to see it. You need that info button. Maybe they've put it up for next week. Maybe if you, let, let's see if we can scroll to next Sunday. They probably haven't, though.
I don't have my giant building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll see if I can do it. I'll see if I can do it.
Right, so you guys calling or folding that ace ten, cuz?
I don't know, man.
I'd probably fold ace nine. I'm calling this.
I take it on the stage.
This is a, this is a look at his HUD situation for me, but, uh, I'm, I'm gonna call this a lot. So Sunday monster stack.
I like the, I like the flat. From the small blind?
No, no, no. I'm never flying here, man.
I like to call a lot there now too. I, I used to three bet that almost all the time. Now I just like to see flops.
I think jamming's okay and I think calling's okay.
What about free bet? No, no win.
Yeah, I could do that.
Only five big blind, not great.
And if he jams, then you have to call it off.
Yeah, like. What?
A, uh, looking at it, it is, uh, thirty thousand chips. Looks to be about a starting stack in the monster stack.
Oh, you got mend.
You like that when it happens.
Ah, bud.
Click, click it back.
We're very religious here and we.
We believe in the church.
Yeah, it was just.
Oh, my god.
Yeah.
Oh, we fold. Yep, he was getting alive.
There's no playing games with ace king.
I just don't know how. Anyway, so. He doesn't have any three bets there.
Maybe he was a misclick.
No, somebody is teaching that. Somebody is teaching like when you open to two, they make it three big blind pre-flop.
I thought Bert says that was good.
Somebody's teaching that. Uh, I don't know who's, what they're up to.
No, I think he was.
Maybe a Brazilian's taking something.
What do you guys do here?
For you to click it back here for he's.
We open king ten, we get three.
I'm folding. Well, this might be a fold, you know?
I'm.
I'm folding here.
I'm out.
Like the guy's free bet from the big blind against E, like what? Against low jack? He should only be free betting like five to seven hands, then.
It's probably gonna be a fold for me, dog.
King jack suited though, you have to cool.
I might call it, depending.
You're a boss to me, Louis. I'll fold that too. You won't say none about it.
What about?
I'll say it's not the GTO play.
What about this one, boss?
Pretty sure it's just rip, right?
I rip.
No, mid raise, mid raise.
No, I think the ace is rip.
You wanna take this offsuit trash post-flop? How dare you?
I've plenty big bets, we're ready.
Yeah, uh, it's probably, it's probably. Okay, it may, it may jam the suited ones over the offsuit ones.
Paired flops up from the big mind LP.
Amazing, but he's betting one, so he's super capped.
Yeah, he's betting one with his whole range here.
What the, what the hell does he have? Either beats me or I'm miles ahead.
Hey, uh, who knows what he has? Kings, queens, jacks, and make it three or four. Gonna have to call one.
Well, here, if he, now here, if he has like ace king, I'm like, okay, I'm gonna take everything, right?
And there's some raisin now, right? You got a full house.
I like this.
Get a raise flop and check back.
No reason to raise here. But here.
Oh, you raise flop, check turn, and then he thinks you're, you're full of shit and you get all his chips.
So if you check raise flop, Ken, and he continues, what are you beating?
Yeah, nothing.
Oh, he's gonna have to, when he bets one big blind and you raise, he's gotta continue with his under pairs.
Yeah, but people are just gonna call.
People that don't, though.
Alright. I'm people, I do. I'm gonna be like, alright, I gotta call.
Well, you, you're, you're becoming an exception, Ken, because you study the game.
A hell of an exception, yes.
In a good way. I'm not saying that in a bad way.
Sometimes good, sometimes that.
Uh, I agree. Now you get, uh, uh, just check call and maybe take like a, a donk line, like block, donk, small.
Look at this, this check here, this check here took all my discipline.
Alright, so, alright.
This check here is years in the making.
Why would you check here and not donk small?
Because I'm trying to do the gallon, smart check on the river type of thing.
He doesn't have any buffs, man, but the donk.
He's gonna check back.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he's not gonna call either though, too, right?
But it, no, if you bet small, he's gonna have some bluffs in that node. That's why I kinda like docking, okay, so.
Well, the same people, the only people, the same people that are gonna have blush when we check here are gonna call a small raise on the flop with decent hands. Like they gotta call, he's gotta call, like when, when he see bets this and you go to like three, he's probably gotta call two overs to the seven and about, and the flush draw. Like, the theory land, he's probably gonna defend that hand to a raise.
What do we do here? Call or raise?
I think basically free bet, but cool's fine.
Uh, okay, so if you call and small blind jams and then the initial opener jams, how do you handle that?
I don't need to be there, honestly.
Well, if you don't have a great answer for that, I think maybe three betting, it's better.
I do, I do. I'm, I'm not gonna continue with whatever, uh, you said happens.
Oh, you're gonna actually fold that? See, man, I would have a hard time there because I presented, this is like one of the best hands that you flat here.
Yeah.
But pocket tens are gonna struggle against two uncapped ranges, right?
Yeah, I guess it's just how uncapped is it really? If the guy's got seven big blinds and the other one. I don't know. He's still gonna have like nines there sometimes that he might ISO into your flat. I don't know. It's, it's kind of interesting, I guess.
What do you say here?
Hi, Jack, jam. I'm going to fold.
No, 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 cool, cool.
Dude, I'm not calling this.
I'm indifferent, depending on the dot point.
Are we in the money, uh, with that, uh, with that ace four hand? I was just wondering.
I think so.
Okay.
Now, now here I fold, cuz there's two players left to act.
Bro, this is nuts. This is, this is nuts. You wanna call that other one, but you're gonna fold this one?
Mm-hmm.
I would be more inclined to call here, but I still think.
I, I, I would have to give the respect, unfortunately, and I would probably end up folding here. I, I, I would have to give the respect, unfortunately, and I would probably end up folding here.
I mean, he's shoving.
Ace selling ace violence, man.
Yeah.
A little bit better of a pip, it's awesome.
What is this?
Louis, uh, run from yesterday.
No, like, what is this three bet?
What's wrong with it?
Isn't that just a jam?
I don't think this is bad, it's probably, I mean, if I was gonna nitpick it, I would say I would make it like five point two or something, but.
Yeah, oh, either size down or jam, the sizing is, doesn't make sense.
I'm not into offering, giving people that, I'm sorry.
I'd size down here as well. I would jam because we're gonna get hunted pretty wide.
Straight flush, you lose, good game.
What? He, he docks? Wow.
This is how you guys win tournaments, okay, this is how you win tournaments.
To, to be fair, he probably doesn't have any, any flushes, right?
Like, why would he go from here? Easy fold this year.
Even pre-flop, you're off twenty or three betting, I mean, you should probably just be fully in the king jack.
Yeah.
Why'd you, I thought your motion was one big blind and then big on the turn on any paired board, I thought that was just what you always do.
Yeah, but not in tree that box.
That was a three bet pot, sorry.
Could jam here, could free bet, could flat.
That's not one big blind.
No, it's small, but this board is like flush draw, you know, it's not a regular pair board, right? Connected high card flush draw, it has range advantage. So like.
I, 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 I think this is completely fine.
I think it's fine too, I'm just breaking the stones, cause he said his motion is on a paired board, he bet one big blind on the flop, then eighty percent on the turn.
That's small on the flop, yeah.
I like the sizing.
So what'd you do on the turn there, you bet like?
No, seven and two thirteen.
This is good, I like this, I think this is just, I think this is fine, there's two flush draws, so. And you didn't go too big, I think this is good, he just didn't have anything to continue with.
Yeah, it is definitely the best.
Ace jack, small bet.
Don't think this is a small bet spot. Yeah, if you look at S P R maybe, right, but ace, jack, flush draw.
Yeah, I like, I like, I like the bigger bit. You can do either, fine.
I'll bet big a lot.
What's he calling?
I mean.
He's got a dock in you, right? Now he's gonna fold, yeah, he got that.
He's got a worse ace, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, I went with really thin here.
That's a bad combo to cool down with, cause you block queen, queen ten, which is the obvious bluff.
Yeah, I bet almost pot here, he calls. Was like no club, come on, no club, and then, yeah, no club.
Yeah, it's probably just his best ace that he doesn't three bet, right?
Yeah.
You, what'd you do, check, check?
Yeah.
He raised, yeah, this is, yeah, this is fine, I th- I was just making sure you weren't the button.
You bet, you bet pull?
Well, thing is, I wanted to do something here, but I'm, I'm the caller out of position from the small blind. I have to check flop, it goes check, check. After it goes check, check on the flop, I hit, I wanna pull a rise, and he has twelve, there's six in the mid. I bet six, thinking he's gonna shove, you know?
No, no, no.
I mean, this is, uh, this is effectively, yeah, that is weird, I was like, this is effectively jamming.
Yeah, that's what I'm expecting him to do, but, no. He just goes like, oh, six, how about six, and I'm like, okay.
Yeah, I kinda like where Louis is at, I think I would do a little smaller.
Then I'm like trying to put him in, and he's like, nah, bro.
Nah, 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 nah. That is really weird that he actually found a fold there.
Yeah, and he's still here. So this is a tricky one, right, I don't like this board, locked up equity. I wanna bet big.
Yeah, I mean, he does have five, six.
I don't have a spade, and I could be betting big right into something better than me. Right?
It's low, it's low connected, so you bet big.
Supposed to check a lot?
Bet fifty-five percent.
Anyhow, in my mind, in my mind, it's a bad business spot. Really is. So I bet big.
I think this is too big, but.
I think you played it okay, Louis.
Bet sixty percent, you bet like, what, eighty percent?
Easy call. I would raise, I think limping's fine, though. You're getting kinda deep, aren't you?
Yes.
Would you raise in a non PKO?
Yeah, I'm just gonna play my blockers.
I think king two O is like a pure limp.
Yeah, this guy was a Brazilian, and he was supposed to be aggressive.
Okay, yeah. Oh, wait, this is a non PKO?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a PKO.
I think you have to bet the turn, though, man, you have to bet the turn here.
So what'd you do, you went, you went check, check, check?
No, he bet, check, cool.
I bet one. He calls, and then I do as if I shut down, so I check.
Uh, dude, this is, uh, this feels like fancy play syndrome.
Yeah.
I mean, if the player's aggressive, though.
What should I do here, just bet flop? Size up?
He doesn't, he doesn't really have ten X, I mean.
I should just bet four?
I would bet three, three and a half, four, something like that.
Okay, okay, I went. And then on the river, I was like, oh my god, now I'm just like, bah.
Hey, then you don't play that balance, do you, you just like bet your good hands?
I mean, king deuce off raising pre-flop is, uh. I don't know, it's pretty polar. But yeah, I mean, I don't know. There's some spots, I, I'm just not in the business of waiting for other people to bet for me.
Yeah.
Uh, this, this feels kinda bad, man.
Yeah.
This is like the worst you call or the best you fold.
Yeah, we're not really deep.
This is a snap fold.
Yeah, I'm folding that.
I mean, if you were like a hundred deep.
Is this Louis' run, or what are we looking at?
Yeah, it's Louis'.
L P, you call this instead of nines? It's a magical nine.
Well, I'll be in position throughout the hand here, right? And then it depends on these three bets stats, if he has eight or more. Uh, say nine or more, I might call, but if he has like four or less, I'm never going.
Yeah.
The guy opens off twenty-seven, he makes it ten, it's like so committing.
Yeah, I would fold here, but I think you gotta look at his squeeze stat, not his street bet stat.
Yeah.
No, this is just an easy fold, I.
Yeah. Now you're screwed.
Oh, man, you've made your bed, you're in for at least another, another street now. Okay, I, I'm, I'm feeling a little more optimistic, he checks, I feel like you have the best hand here a lot. I, I'm checking and praying for a card less, uh, Jack's okay.
We never jam for protection?
No.
Check it down.
Louis, are you kidding?
The protection jam.
Why do you think he doesn't have good hands still when he checks?
I mean, he is gonna have some good hands, but I'm, he, his range is going to start leaning towards, uh.
Honestly, jam flop could be a thing, I don't know, but I think this guy always has it, alright, well, we lucked out. Jam flop seems like a reasonable play, though, I don't know.
No, you fold out the gloves and get cooled by better.
Look at the S P R, man, S P R's like one, like, you just, you have sevens on a eight, eight, six board, like, what are you gonna call flop?
It was ever one on the flop, because he bet like five on the flop, so it was like one and a half on the flop.
What does jamming do with sevens?
It folds out his queen.
You don't want him to.
It doesn't matter.
Well, when you're crushed.
It doesn't matter.
Why doesn't it matter?
Cause the S P R's one.
It's a pub to jam in.
No, it's not, dude, we're either going with it or we're not, like, I mean. I don't know, I think it's reasonable, I'm not saying I would do it, but like, I would never be here, once we're here post flop, like.
Just a call, you keep the bluffing.
I don't know. Alright, and then, but then you're gonna fold to a turn jam.
Yeah.
So what's the point of quote unquote keeping the bluffs in, you're gonna fold, you're gonna get bluffed.
Uh, if he, if he press on the bell. You know?
Okay, but do you see how I feel this is logically inconsistent, if we want to keep the bluffs in, but then we're gonna fold anyway, then, then, then we're getting.
No, cause he's gonna shut down with some of them, right?
Well, the thing is, Danny here, I don't.
He's gonna shut down, then he'll fold to a jam.
I don't always fold, that's my problem here.
Alright, I think it's worth exploring this further.
Yeah, I, I would.
What is he, what's he calling, he's, he's probably gonna call it ace, king, ace, queen on the flop if we jam, right?
No, that's the fold.
I don't know, it puts him in a world of hurt.
Unless they have a flush draw, they need to call, but.
If I'm him and I have ace king there, I might spite it off and like, just. You wanna see your full equity? I wanna see five cards, I wanna, you know, maybe he's got some hard draw occasionally.
We look at the sevens and a solver, instead of just going by it, when there's still as much discussion about it.
You wanna see sevens?
There's a few heads I wanted to say already.
I think that's a, I think that's a full pre, they have to eat three.
We're gonna have to, yeah, we're gonna have to slide up.
Pre jammer.
You're never gonna call, I think.
Yeah, it's not gonna solve with post flop, cause it was multiway here, but if you just.
It doesn't go multiway, it doesn't go multiway post flop.
Just ignore the other guy and look at the post flop situation that's of interest. So like, ignore the initial opener and just put like the worst pair in there you can.
That never works for me.
Alright, we do actually have some. Uh, sevens in range.
The squeeze range is way different than his three bet range. Sign it close.
Do you, does it change how you play eight, eight, six with a pair of sevens? That, I mean, I don't care.
The ranges are dramatically different.
So are you playing sevens on eight, eight, six differently in a heads up pot than you are from a squeeze?
Yeah, I'm saying, why?
It's a pure jam, by the way.
This squeeze rage is like tens plus or something there.
Some suited.
Well, run, run it as is, like. It goes heads up to the block.
Very vindicated. I'm putting it in chat.
Under the gun one open, cut off call, small blind three bet.
You might have to look at it at like thirty-five to get the.
Can you say if we click here, we have a solution?
Yeah, there you go. Ram it in.
Alright. What's our jamming range look like?
Um, sevens, nines, uh, king ten hearts.
Ace king, ace jack, ace ten sub, ace nine.
Yeah, this is small blinds range, so bet small.
Oh, that's their range.
Yeah, give him the, the quarter pot.
So all pairs mixing.
One day seven of heart to jam.
It's not a bad chippy V solution.
Yeah, I think if you go out there and do that whenever you're deep in the tournament.
The point I'm trying to make here is like, you can fold pre-flop, but if you're gonna not fold pre-flop, then you kind of made your bed, and you're like. Alright, well, we get this, we get this board, alright, here we go.
No, 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 why would you say that, Danny, why would you think that's the right, the right thing to do?
Cause that's how poker works.
When you call, when you just call pre-flop, you're hoping he has overs, right, like? Yeah. So it's like, you get the flop where no overs, so at that point, it's like, alright, we're either. So now it's like you have the best flop you're gonna get, right, like you're not, that's the best flop you hope for, so now you probably just wanna go for it when it's. The S P R is, the S P R is one.
Yeah, well, it's not a bad flop, right, so I call and then. No, it's just check, 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 easy life.
Right, cause if he's got nines, tens, jacks, he's probably gonna wanna get more protection, right, so he'll bet bigger.
Right.
And then, I guess the only thing we're worried about if he's betting so small is. Maybe if he's got the, the big, big pairs.
You can mix, uh, but I don't think jamming is good for the later stages. If you do well at the beginning of the, uh, like level three of the game, I think it's the best play, could be, but. At this point, I'm not sure.
Fair enough.
This one was tricky.
Honestly, I might jam as a blow.
Throw it all in?
It, I C M for, against other than just fold.
Yeah.
We got a good block, it's, uh.
Is this him not a call at I C M? With this sort of stack distribution, like this one here, this one here. Uh, this one here, like this guy's in trouble.
I'd rather like micro three bet.
And then if we make a pair, it's like, I would like to micro three bet, but he's too short and it's not suited, so.
If you clear this, uh, you can shove.
Who did you jam?
I think shove.
Well, what was the call, wasn't great, I just folded.
Yeah, like I. I hate shove.
I would fold or make it four and a half.
I, I, I don't really like any of the options except for fold, to be honest.
Why, why are we going through all these interesting hands?
What about this one?
This one's not interesting. The gas pedal pressed. Alright, I'll look it up.
This is a trivial call. Or click, either, I mean, it's the same thing effectively.
I mean, it's like everyone's.
You call, you better call the rest.
Um, I just fold. Oh, check, uh, the, the.
Probably just a bet.
Well, we have second pair. And like, I feel like king X is the biggest part of his defense here, cause he should be very aggressive with his aces, right?
Yeah, but he's defended all sorts of nonsense, like we want him to fold, queen, jack.
Well, it's I C M, right, and then.
Yeah, he still should be fairly wide cooling from this stack size versus the late position open.
You guys say it's a range bet here or no?
Yeah, range bet.
Range bet?
I'm gonna be a little more precautious here, just because he's gonna have a lot of check jams, and I don't.
He doesn't have pocket eights, he doesn't have kings.
What do you do facing a jam, Lewis, you have banned on your A, or you call it off?
Facing a jam, it depends on the opponent, but.
Answer the question, Louis.
I think he should have jams anyway, he should have micro three bets.
Le- Lewis doesn't wanna answer. Okay, so not, not a, a, a check here, I should be.
Lewis doesn't want the jam.
Okay. I should bet one. But we have the ace now, so with the ace, everything is good now, right? Oh, no, what's going on?
Maybe not.
Word.
So he calls, so we're like, ah, he checks, what do we do?
Alright, check.
Put him in the box?
No.
Check and lose.
Check and lose, alright, great idea. King, king ten?
Yeah, it's fine.
Ace jack?
Yeah, it's fine.
King Y?
King, queen O is jamming, by the way.
Mm-hmm.
No, it, I'm looking at I C M twenty-five percent of the field, it's never jamming.
Oh, never jamming, okay. Oh, never jamming, okay.
It does three bet sum, um, to five.
Is it cooling or folding?
Nice.
What do you guys do here?
Is it three better fold or is it?
Three bet to indu- induce.
Where are we in the, where are we in the tournament?
Three bet call, but it's, it's only winning point zero, zero, one big blinds.
Okay, it doesn't mix folding though?
No.
Interesting, alright.
Ace, jack, O though, is like almost a pure fold.
Oh.
Interesting.
Big stack at the table and it's the cutoff, he's pretty late position, we're gonna be aggressive with this end.
I mean, if it's on the bubble, I just flop. If it's not on the bubble.
This, this is like final table bubble.
So then this is a call, man.
Yeah, cool.
Uh, jam, six and a half for jam, probably.
I only heard one answer that I liked.
Think we call.
Thirty big blinds, you're not, I don't think you have any jams final table bubble for thirty big blinds.
You would be very surprised.
I'm thinking I'm jamming this.
If he calls and loses, like, that's, does, and.
This guy? Arnie, Arnie, this guy, you, you don't know him. You know, he could.
You don't know him like I do.
Yeah, no, no, it's like, this guy could be bat shit crazy, you know? Maybe he didn't.
Arnie, we spent all night last night together, you don't know him like I do.
Nine is almost a pure jam, ten jam sum, but mostly three bets, never calls.
Can we see?
The final table bubble range. What, cause, cause I thought the risk premiums like incredibly high and we don't wanna play big pot versus another big stack.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at final table.
Oh.
We just got such a pretty hand, right?
Alright.
So Louis, are we calling here, I guess, eh?
Wait, even on the final.
You think I'm gonna go all in here?
Louis, teach these nits a lesson, jam it in, man.
I'm jamming here.
Jamming in, but I've been hurt.
I've been hurt too, man.
I've been hurt.
It's time, it's time for us.
We're going for the win.
I'm sorry. Please the trauma, man, please the trauma.
Um, final two tables, tens is a pure jam.
Oh my.
Easy.
Can we see?
I'm looking at final two tables, button has fifty, big blinds, big blind has thirty.
And everybody else has tiny stacks? You're second in the table, there's no way.
Yeah, we, average stack is crucial here, I think.
I'm guessing Louis, you're gonna go like six and a half.
There, there, do you know what average stack was Louis? Do you know what the other table looked like at all?
Hmm, I think it was very similar to this.
So like two and twenty, twenty-five?
Yeah, and I'm saying final two tables, but it could be final three tables as well.
If it's final three tables, it's a trivial jam. Don't disappoint me, Louis, put the chips in the middle.
He's gonna fold.
I guarantee you, I never jammed it.
I'm the one who jams.
Cause I've, I've been hurt.
Did you fold? Don't tell me you folded.
I ain't folding, right?
Okay.
I.
Oh, there's no way Louis is folding.
I ain't playing.
Yeah.
Right?
You should like mix jam or raise on three tables.
Our stack is around thirty-eight pigs.
Now maybe.
So, we've looked at three different ICM solves, they all had jamming.
Do we call?
I'm actually pretty surprised that on the FT you're inducing this.
I like, I like. I like the check raise.
Gotta get money in the pot somehow.
Yep.
I'll bet like.
Don't check, they're very small.
Whoa, 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 hold on, hold on. Check, what do you guys, what do you guys think our check raise range is doing here?
Checking.
Checking a ton. The five is so bad for the check raise range.
Yeah, it's gonna check, I'm not saying it's not gonna be polar, but I mean, if you have a bet, name a better bet.
Range, two pair, and we make a boat on a five?
So the five is really bad for, when we check raise, the five is really bad for our range because we have less sets and two pairs by a large amount.
True.
So just check range?
You're supposed to check a lot, I, I don't know how much more you're checking, but like, it's just such a bad card for your check raise range, I normally range check in these spots.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Our king, four of clubs bluff with.
When you, when you check raise in the full house, you make the full house, you often do a lot of checking.
It's also because this turn card is a rainbow, so all of our bluffs don't pick up equity, so. So many of our bluffs have to check here that our value has to check.
And he actually has more fives than us, like he has ace, five suited, we're not really check raising any five X's.
More fives in the big blind?
No, but we have, um, queen, five and some ten, five probably.
It feels like we're a bunch of monkeys throwing shit at the wall right now, pull up a solve somebody. Yeah, 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 no, no, no. But I'm just saying like the general, general motion of how you're playing this like check raise. Five pairing situation, that's, that's what I'm referring to, I'm not talking about besides that.
But it's different, cause with the risk premium this high, our check raise range is like king, four of clubs and then queen, ten, queen, five. It's literally like two pair and a random bluff. And we call everything else, and sets, sorry, sets as well.
Yeah, you just gotta look at it.
Doesn't exist.
You're just gonna have to look at the range, not the actual hand that you have because of that.
I just told you the range, what do you mean?
I'm, I'm wondering.
It's absurdly thin.
That's not what I'm asking, I'm asking, I wanna see how, I wanna see how the range responds when you put a five on the turn after you check raise. In general here.
Alright, and chippy V with a completely different check raising range.
Yeah, you're not check raising different like hand constructions, like it's still check raising the same types of hands, you're right, the range is gonna look, the range morphology is a little different.
Alright, I think we're talking past each other here.
No, because you, you guys don't understand, you need to know what you do with your package after your checker, you know?
Correct, but, but. I'm trying to convey to Galen, Galen, were you around, uh, like last week when we were doing the ICM stuff with?
Yeah, a little bit.
Do you recall with like the mega risk premium on the bubble, like it depends, the risk premium here might not be as high and so we might be.
All the risk premium does is going to, uh.
Zero checks on our.
But then we don't have tens in range.
It's gonna dampen your size is all it's really gonna do. I mean, like, if you don't have representation.
We saw the range was, it was literally only two pair.
Yeah, high equity hands, right? It was a really, we, we really shifted the higher equity, uh, hands and a high, higher equity bluffs it looked like when we were looking at that shit.
Like maybe ace, queen here. Maybe.
I think I should bet now, cause the more I think about it. If he has a hand like his, uh, like his queen, he's never gonna fold it, right?
No, he's not, that's why, I, I, this check raise check thing seems kinda crazy to me, I, I, I don't know if I'm like on a different planet or not, but.
Right, that's what I'm trying to say too, like we still have all the nuts.
Yeah, this guy was Brazilian, I was trying to trap him, was really aggressive, so I made a mistake, I, by checking.
And he checks back, yeah, okay, so he's checking back a ton here, you get like a, a really, really good river card to do this with though. Like he's gonna be in the nuts, he's got, he's gonna be in the box with so much stuff here now.
No, you should bet, you should bet thirteen here.
Uh, pretty low.
You've learned nothing from, from our studies, huh? There was no jamming with the risk premium this high, there's no jamming anymore.
Well, I have the nuts, do I not?
Yeah, so you bet thirteen and pray he'll call an ace.
Yeah, maybe you're right.
So. What hands do we think he's calling the checkers with on the flop and not betting the turn?
King, jack.
Ace, king.
Jack, ten. Um, ace, ace, king. Uh.
So, jack.
Eight, nine, maybe, or I don't know, maybe not eight, nine, eight, nine, eight, nine's a bit of a stretch.
A lot of ten X, how many ten X when we have two of them in our hand?
Well, that's true, right? That's true, you, you are double blocking ten X.
That's true, that's completely fair. Forgot what our hand was for a sec.
But it, it reaches into that composition.
Yeah, I was just wondering how much we're betting the river and what sizing when the ace comes.
I mean, it's definitely better for his range, without a doubt, it's definitely better for his range.
We could check jam too, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it's a better hand to just check jam. Cause we'll still have queen X in range that wanna be protected as well.
Or we bet small, like, like a block bet.
I think you're just, uh, you're gonna let his hands like queen, jack, just realize their equity too frequently, I think is the problem.
He's gonna check it back to all his pocket pair.
Yeah, me too, me too, me too, that's what.
I don't mind this, I feel like both turn and river can be played in a lot of different ways and they're probably both fine, but. Yeah, turn is the interesting street, I think river, big bet or check are both good, or, or even, yeah, I don't know. Hard to know, right?
Polar, polar is the answer on the river.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I agree, I think he definitely needed to check it some, but big bets not bad either.
Mm-hmm.
But maybe not all in at this point. All in just looks like we. I don't know. Are you really gonna bluff him, punt it off for, for two X pot?
Does anybody think check, the check, I, the check raise in ICM is a mistake there in that last hand? I know it's like chippy V. I just feel like. Again, I don't know, cause I haven't seen like the post flop ICM sims, but I feel like. The general strategy in this spot is to keep the pot small, so we might like have almost no check raises here if it's final table bubble.
I agree. I agree.
That's what I was saying.
But we still have this never.
Uh, the problem is, you're gonna have a very hard time getting all the chips in with your value if you don't check raise, versus a one point three five chip bet. Big blind bet.
Even if you have a three or four percent check raise range, unblocking top pair and second set, this is gonna find the check raise.
Yeah, I'm kinda with P, like you're unblocking, you're unblocking out of you.
I think it's not a lot of check raises, but I think this is one of them.
Yeah, this might be too nuanced, I just feel like in it, I feel like the strategy there should be like, he should be going in ICM, if he's got you covered. And like you have a ton of risk premium, he should just really be going like bet, 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 cause then you have to fold pretty much everything, um. So that's why you can just check call there, but who knows if the guy is actually doing that, you know?
I mean.
Guys might just bet and give up with their air or whatever.
You shouldn't read triple off because the ranges become too strong by the turn. So you shouldn't.
I think it would be great if we identified some of these hands that are really interesting and run them and then actually study them and. With slavers rather than sit here and go back and forth and guess forever.
Yeah.
Like this, I'm getting absolutely nothing from this.
Well, the problem is like, we can't look at this. It's an ICM scenario.
That's not, that's not the solution though, honestly.
Maybe you were not paying attention when we saw the solution.
No, we can run it in Pyo neck, right?
Yeah, we, we, we could actually do like ICM and all and said, break the spots down and like, like two weeks ago, we spent money like our time. Looking in Pyo, ICM, without ICM ranges, we could actually do ICM ranges and study an ICM. On interesting spots and really learn what this offers doing.
But you understand what he's saying, just because you had ICM doesn't mean that the node's gonna all of a sudden change from a range bet to like a polar construction, right?
For your check raise range.
Can we prep it for Wednesday?
The ranges are different though, like it's a different game.
The ten spot?
Ranges are different pre-flop and like, ICM pressure is gonna change that, I think.
What do you want, Danny?
Can you send Ken the, the tens hand?
Yeah, he wants to just prep a couple hands.
So like, and that solution to check raise five, three, oh, we're not doing that. Final two tables. It just ain't doing it.
The raising range will go super thin.
I wouldn't be surprised if there was no check raises. Like, it's not gonna be a large portion of the strategy like it is in chippy V.
You there last week, Nick, or no?
Hold on.
No. Okay.
Somebody's heads, write that, like.
Is that accurate?
Like that, hold on, make a note which spots they are, what, how many are left, whatever, give them make, I don't play poker, I got all week to sit here and just run hands. So then we can look at a few of them later. And then you guys can complain about how I set it up and how that's no good and blah, 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 but it's. But it's better than this.
I appreciate the recognition, thank you, thank you.
That is a really good plan, just forget to criticize it.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Ken, I appreciate it.
Criticize, criticize, criticize.
Thank, I'm about to say, thank you for taking the time to run many hands that you have over the years.
Well, look at.
Oh, that's not fun to say.
Come on, Pete, why you gotta be so heartfelt and kind?
I don't know.
Uh, I think you're just pressed into call, I, I hate it, you're not doing great. He's gonna have tens, nines and.
Wait, wait, is this the final table now? I remember them talking about this hand.
Final table bubble.
I'm not, I don't think, I'm not folding. Even if he has ace, king here, your hand is.
You open E P, he jumps into you.
Yeah, but he's got seven and a half, so it's five to win how much? Five to win like fifteen, you need thirty-three percent equity.
Would you rather call this or ace, jack off?
This.
Ace, jack off.
So B buddy showed, this is the G, this is the ICM range B money, right? Tens pure call there.
No, we've seen ace, jack fold in a spot like this, right?
Every range I looked at, tens was mixing jams and calls.
Yeah, that was, see, again, I think it's, that, that's the last hand, that's, I just think it's, it's wildly all over the place depending on the other stacks. So like, yeah, that was, that was seven people, and that, that seemed to be.
Yeah, I think we, we need, we need an HRC for that one, honestly.
Yeah, so you'll send me some hands, I'll pay, right? We'll just do this, right?
But if you look at that, if you look at that chart, like, that chart's got. Like two, like two jams, right? So it's like, it's clearly an iteration of stack sizes where, and then I, I, I looked at some of those other charts where there was a ton of jams. So it's clearly all over the place depending on other stack sizes.
For sure. So, yeah, this is miserable.
Um.
I folded.
I think, I think I'm calling.
I like calling.
But.
I, I'm not happy, but I'm calling.
Oh, this guy was a nip.
Still. He's in with the big lines.
If he can any pair here.
Well, yeah, I guess he is a big net, if he is a big net, you can think about folding, right? But.
This might be one of those weird situations where like, if we have less chips, this is a fold, cause he should be super tight, but we don't, since we have so many chips. It doesn't matter as much.
But if you tag the guy as a knit, they put about too much money in the middle to call this, if you believe that he has you beat in the pre-flop.
What does LP that chat range is?
Yeah, we're always pre-flop, it's just our odds are so good. Um, that when he has seven, pocket eights, pocket nine, pocket ten, ace, king.
I was talking about queen, I wasn't talking about the, the sevens.
We're still talking about queen, jack too, Louis just likes to go really fast. So I don't even know what happened last hand.
I go really.
I was looking about the hand two hands ago.
Nick, I go really fast in bed as well.
That's cool, man.
Nice, nice.
Much information.
At least you're keeping it consistent, so you disappoint everyone equally.
No. No, no.
You just call, I mean, it's a call, you do, you just call.
Are you sure? Those five chips are worth so much, man, do we have to gamble?
I folded.
Alright, I call for sure.
Alright, Danny, he's gonna be doing this with six X, he's gonna be doing this with like random cards sometime.
Any pair probably, if he's got a five, four, three.
Ace, seven of hearts does this. Yeah, he's got worse ace, X here.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, you talked me into it. Call and get shown five, six and.
And then cry about it, yeah.
I'm doing this with so much air in his spot.
Chop it up, chop it up.
He gave you the nine deuce.
No respect.
Dude, that's.
That guy's brave.
Why did, huh?
I like it.
You do, cause you're too short, right?
This is.
I don't think this is a jam, is this a jam?
This is good, dude, this is good, I like this.
Actually, I guess this is a ten, there's a six, actually.
Yeah.
This is fine.
I mean, the small blind can't really call with ICM pressure, so.
God, he woke up and we got him, you luck sack.
We scammed him.
Scam.
That's huge, holy crap.
Yeah, it is huge.
Alright, after losing the ace, king, that feels great.
You were unlucky and then very lucky.
Pay attention, guys. This is lose tournaments.
Oh. Almost got him, almost. Uh, I mean, if.
Fold, fold, fold.
Yeah.
I'm folding.
Dangerous deuce.
Chippy V. But we can't fold deuces though. Okay, okay.
A reach out. Oh, he's jamming.
Okay, I was gonna say, the question is, if you're not gonna fold it, what are you gonna do with it? I think jamming is better than raising.
Yes.
No.
Fucking deuce.
It's a pun.
I think it's terrible, ICM, but yeah.
Uh, most of the time you're gonna fold.
Yeah, they call Kuba, right? There's a four and eight.
We could HRC that one too.
I don't hate boxing them up like that, man.
Yeah, there's some short stacks out there, four and eights. They're gonna be, they're they're gonna be folding enough to the deuces is gonna be okay.
But you're like dead every time they call you.
Absolutely. Right? Or you're flipping.
You're hopefully flipping. A lot of times, crap.
Yeah, well, they're gonna have a lot of ace, queen, ace, kings still.
Oh, I found one where it's a jam.
Give a jam to ten, nine here for fifteen?
No. I mean, you don't have a pair, you don't have any blockers. It's almost all of your stack now, just R five.
When you, when you get cool, we have good equity, though. I don't know.
Apparently.
Kayla, what do you think?
I'm kinda, I'm kinda with you, Louis. They moved you to a new table, yeah? So I if, it would depend on like what the other table looks like to some extent.
Haven't we seen in ICM, all of our jamming ranges are blocker oriented? It's not about the suited connectiveness of hands.
Yeah, I mean, that that's it. It's definitely a good generalization. I I do think that um. We are gonna have some uh some jams here with these middling gapper things sometimes.
Alright, Ken, got another one for you.
Fuck, you know, man, this is.
You might be able to find, this is, this is the, you could probably uh GTO wizard this one. Everything's very similar as far as stack size goes.
I'm gonna see if I can find it.
You can probably find this one.
This one?
What what do you think he has?
So you got seventeen.
Hopefully overs.
Honestly, I like jamming this. I do jam this in game.
When he jam, you have to call. What he has a better kicker than you?
Well, he could have seven, eight sometimes. He could have spades sometimes.
Spades, yeah. He's gonna have so a lot of drawing in on this shove, so yes, I'm calling this for sure.
When he jams, you feel like he's leaning towards fluff.
Check five. What is this?
What?
What a, what a monster. Sometimes they show you Jack five.
What?
As it comes down the chimney and just leaves you a presence.
Why, why are we in Disneyland?
Final table bubble, Jack five.
I put the pocket deuces spot in the chat. Something similar, I think.
Yeah, okay, that that looks reasonable.
Oh, wait, sorry, that is the wrong, that's the wrong file.
Okay, so this is a hand where this guy's gonna rip my soul.
God damn it.
He ripped your soul up, huh?
What's going on here? Yes, so basically Flab goes check, check. Hmm, a six pairs on that turn. So what do you do?
You can dock, man. You can docks, you can bet small sometimes. Especially with the. Or wait, it went check, check, so you can definitely bet here sometimes.
One third box.
Oh, you gotta, dude, you got a good bluff spot. I hate it for you.
Check, give up. Queen of hearts is bad to have.
Think I'm hit with Nick here, man. Just give up.
You'll have so much just better garbage.
I would say this, okay? This feels half-hearted. Because if you actually have a six or a straight, are you ever putting in this like? One foot in, one foot out, half pot bet? Like, if you're gonna bluff, man.
It's always.
You gotta put like your, you gotta put your big, big girl pants on and uh put some chips in the middle, man.
Okay.
So like pot, if you're gonna bluff.
Okay.
But I'm kinda with Nick where it's like, uh, the queen of hearts not great. Oh, you're just uh, this is, this is pocket eights or something crazy. No, it's not pocket eights. Fives or sixes. Pocket sixes, yeah. That's the only one that would check back on the flop, right?
Good, you you really like, I feel like if you're gonna bluff, you want a hot river, right?
Yeah, I agree.
And like, he can definitely have some six X. I mean, he actually, maybe he doesn't. He.
Dude, a four is good, a seven's good, an eight's good. Those are all good look cards.
Maybe like micro bluff and target his insta-folding stuff that he got there with.
Yeah, it looks like ten, nine suited is a good jam.
Oh, do you jam here? Do you have a jam here?
Is it jamming a lot from that region there, Nick?
I can't find the exact structure, but I'm looking at the button has twenty-three, small blind has seventeen, the big blind has fourteen, which is similar. Um, and your whole suited uh suited eights to.
That block.
Yeah, yeah, the suited eights and better are jamming, king, jack ten O, queen ten O, king ten O, offsuit tens, offsuit jacks, all jamming. Low suited aces jamming, suited kings jamming, twos through sevens jamming, you're just jamming a ton.
Yeah, I feel like me and Gayle, we went through this, but we were doing some review the other day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We 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 ran into some similar spots, Louis, when we were looking at your thing.
I'm looking at final two tables though. I don't know how close we are. Um, but yeah, you're jamming nineteen percent of the range and R fiveing twenty-five percent of the range. So lots of jams.
Man, this spot, okay. This spot, I'm gonna play differently depending on the player. If this is like Brazil and he's going vamo, vamo, I'm all in.
Mm hmm.
But uh, if it's, if it's not, and it's somebody with like nittier stats, I might just call.
This is exactly what it is. This is a Brazilian going vamos, vamos.
Oh, win, win.
If he stays.
Final table or final two?
Yeah.
He is going vamos here.
I think it's final two tables, cuz.
We just got put in a big one.
He's had twenty big ones.
Oh, no rollback, okay. Um.
I think this is a quick.
I found this exact stack configuration, but it was final table. Even final table, we jam half the time here.
Yeah, I'm jamming.
So you guys think it's a good jam?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Final two, I would jam, yeah.
Nice.
If it's final table, I'm not, but final two, I'm jamming.
So this was a great idea. Until this.
Oh, it's actually a call, huh?
Well, this is a cool.
I guess there's so many short stacks, right? Like, it's not good for us if we lose.
Alright, cuz.
Vamo.
Vamos.
Yeah, you gotta hit the turn, vamo.
What? That is unbelievable. That's awesome.
Oh, whoo, whoo.
This, this is why you jam at the ace.
Woo.
Hide the cards, hide the cards, hide the cards. He's tilted, I'm calling.
Easy call.
Alright, what's the worst pair you're calling there, though? That's a good question.
This one.
I'm pretty close, to be honest. Eight is kinda like a uh, maybe the floor for me. Maybe eights.
Uh, somewhere in that. I think so as well.
Alright, I put the one that I found for ace four in the chat.
Yeah, I can't find it.
That's actually pretty close.
Oh, but always one of those where it's jamming ace, ace deuce and ace free, isn't it? But.
Yeah, this is good. It's very polar, so like jam in the bottom of the deck and then that like middling strong ace region.
What was the deuces spot, Danny?
Uh, it was where Louis was buttoned.
I just can't.
An open jam.
Uh, I just limp him.
Uh.
Man, we could put so much pressure on here.
Really big risk.
We don't really wanna have, play a big pot with this guy either.
You don't wanna jam this, so I would just raise.
Didn't they have more than eleven big blinds?
Yeah, I like limp. Oh, you checked. Interesting. I mean, that's fine.
Potentially. I thought the small blind had like seventeen maybe and the big blind is short.
Uh. Oh, the four liner.
I mean, okay.
It was the closest I could find.
You lost the minimum.
Yeah. Do we ever think about checking back that king five there to see if he'll probe or induce there on the turn?
No, not really.
I think you wanna ring.
I thought it was final table.
I think you wanna ring. Rings at one dude.
How do you feel when you made the final table?
Man. I was.
Relieved.
He felt nothing inside.
Nothing.
Yeah, cuz that's because he's dead.
No big deal.
They've taken his soul.
The question, uh, on the ace seven, if we jam, does he call the ace ten there, given the stack configuration?
Probably not, but he might. And if he does.
Whoa, this stack configuration, ace ten is in a sad state.
Looks good to me.
Guys, I think we should bet small there on the river because he's super capped.
Uh, he's not capped on the flush completes.
I think we could have checks.
Yeah, turn goes check, check, so I just bet big with my.
Yeah, yeah.
How do you structure?
You could definitely be checking back aces on the, on the, on the flop, on the turn, I mean.
I'm just always polar here with bluffs. And with this.
I don't think you're always polar here. I think you're definitely gonna have small bets.
You have small bets, but I don't know if you wanna small bet a flush.
I don't think you do.
You're right. First top pair is betting small, second pair is betting small. There's plenty of block bets.
What do you do if you get jammed on?
Fold.
With the, I'm calling with other hands probably folding.
It's like ace X of spades every time. You cry.
You said you're, you're calling, Louis?
With the, the queen eye flush.
I would fold, I think.
Bro, I'm folding. If that guy jams over my big polar bet on the river and I've played all day to make it to the final table of a Sunday major.
It's like ace four of spades.
Yes. I'm folding.
You're folding to a jam here.
Yeah, yeah.
Why I ask this is because if you're polarizing to fold to a jam, I think it's a mistake. Um, cuz I I think the sizing is probably wrong then. I I'd rather bet small and call a raise than bet big and have to fold to a jam.
Maybe. I I'm okay. I I can see where you're going with that. Although you're kind of, you're kind of giving him more room to bluff if you bet small.
Which is fine. With a snap call.
I mean, there's not.
You could also check and call any sizing.
I think that's good too. But I don't think they're gonna bet enough.
Or maybe not the jam.
Yeah, that's the problem, right? If he piles.
What if he piles? You check and he piles?
Oh, man, I I would, I would roll around on the ground and cry about it. Is he really doing this with a snap?
Shouldn't we be betting a lot smaller here?
This sizing.
Bet one big.
I like this sizing if, I like the sizing if you're deeper. You're too shallow for this.
Here comes big bet Louis again. We roasted you for this last time.
Like this is, spent one big binder, deck and back.
This is bad.
That's good. That's true. You you've improved. You only did it one time. I don't blame you for wanting max protection here.
I uh, I don't like a big bet here. I don't like it.
But it's not great.
Yeah, I agree. He's got twos, he's got fours.
Louis was scared, man. He was scared.
I don't blame him, man. I've been hurt. I know Louis has been hurt. I've seen what Louis has been through. I'd be scared too. Do you know?
You'll know.
Just ma- put a little bet out there.
What are you gonna do here?
Just always jam. And standard.
Then uh, hit the king.
Yes, I'll ever be scammed him again, didn't you?
What do we think about this?
King in the window.
Yeah, he's small stack. I think he has to call that.
You're very good at getting in, getting it in bad and winning.
Actually, that's all I can do, man.
Fuck, yeah, that. I mean, I mean, in every tournament you win, you have to get it in bad and and hit.
At least five times.
Dirty.
They say if you're not getting it in bad enough, you're not bluffing enough, right? Is that not true?
I would say that's true.
I think it's if you're not betting river and getting called by better, you're not thin value betting enough.
People who say if you're not.
I think that's true.
You're not good are the people who are getting it in bad too much. Those are who those they are.
No, you win this one. This is this one you win, isn't it?
No, this is the one who gets scammed. Yeah. Oh, wait, how do you lose?
No, 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 cuz they have one was against the big one.
How many times do you get queens at the final table? What the hell?
Three times.
Nice jam.
Whoa.
How do we feel about this one? Cuz with this twelve here, I feel like this is a jamming two spot?
No, with four left, I don't know if he can be that out of line anymore.
He's not shallow enough for jamming it too. If he had like three big blinds, sure. Uh, yeah, I.
He doesn't wanna call anything though when you jam on him.
The thing is.
He could wake up with aces.
Thirty fifty, twenty ten. That's how it works. The bigger the stack, the more you get to jam.
But he. His risk premium is infinite here, right? No, no, sorry, he's not thirty. But his risk premium is really high, right?
The problem here is you're jamming with middle of your range, which generally isn't good.
I mean, it's, there's, it's four left, so it's not that high. Um, it it's still definitely relevant. And he's also.
Louis, I walked away to make eggs. What did you do?
What I would say is if the thirty big blind stack also had ten, I would love this.
Bro, this is, this is, this is fine. I don't think this is like a big deal.
I don't think there's as much pressure on him as you think there is.
I agree. I think it's close. I don't hate it, but I don't love it either.
Uh, I think jam here maybe with the king, jack.
You could look at it. I don't think it's that bad, I'll be honest.
I'm trying to find one. It's hard.
It is, yeah. The the, the arrangements are narrower and narrower.
Yeah.
Like the small blind isn't that shallow. Or the uh, cutoff.
Who's shaking up their protein shakes?
It's more, it's more cam lip.
But it's kinda sad when you come full from this scenario.
You're whipping up some eggs.
Mute the bastard. Right, king, jack. It's queen.
Very nice, running hot.
Now this one.
Oh, here's the pun.
Oh.
Oh.
This is fucking terrible.
Wait.
I don't know about that, man.
I don't, I don't think you can make a play here that's terrible.
You can't call.
It's not possible. You can't call, why not?
It's a ten big blind jam. You, it's a fifth of your stack. Like, there's no reason to call. And this is a lot of ace X and king X.
So the ICM pressure here isn't very high on us, right?
Hmm.
We wanna be putting pressure on not calling off marginally.
Yeah, I I agree with that. Um, I still feel like this has to fall.
Maybe I'm a nit. I don't know. I'm never.
I don't know, dude. I I don't know. I I punt, so.
Personally, I think calling is fine and the folding is fine.
We're gonna be chip leader. We're still chip leader. It does. There's something to be said for keeping the short stack in.
Yeah, you're doubling up. You're doubling up the short stack.
Yeah, there'd be something, there's something said to keep the shorty in if you fold, but there's also something said to be like, we just knock him out and create.
I mean, this range is just so much ace X and king X. Like, we're flipping so much here and I just don't wanna, I don't wanna gamble. I wanna be putting.
Jamming always. He's jamming all his pairs, right?
I put one in chat that is close.
So what do you think his jamming range is? We lose, if we fold here, we lose one big one, which we're gonna, which we can get back trivially on any hand. And the opportunity to take him out, it's not such a great, I mean. We're not ahead to take him out.
First question I like to ask is what we think their jamming range is, and that determines, I think, uh, how.
Oh, yeah, let me put that in chat too.
Every ace X, uh, most king X, um, suited connectors, which were beating some of those all pairs.
You think uh, jack ten suited is in there for sure, right? How about suited nines, king nine, eight, king nine, uh, queen nine? Yeah, so they're all in there, right? Uh, how about jack ten O?
All the suited broadways, most of the offside.
Alright, I put their, their jam in our response.
There you go. Yeah, I think this is reasonable.
Mm hmm.
That was close. That's why we're debating. I think our call's close looking at this range, but I would still think it's probably good.
The more that they're jamming the top of the range, the worse this is for us.
Yeah, so if they're jamming ace ten suited and ace jack, ace clean O.
Pocket jacks, pocket tens.
Yeah, to be fair, in this one, ace ten and ace jack suited are raised to six, which if they're not doing that, they're probably just jamming.
Yeah, probably.
Like they take that out, they put that in the jam.
So we do against a raise six. Uh, we jam. Okay.
I'm at a table with like Negranu and a bunch of people that are just amazing at poker. I'll take these spots, but otherwise I'm just gonna sit there like the the marginal zero EV spots on a final table. I'm just gonna pass like.
Yeah, I like it. I like it. It's bottom of range. I like folding.
Fair. If you do double him here, the three of them are pretty close and you can still just pressure all of them. They're all trying to outlast each other a little bit.
Yeah, I suppose like bottom of chippy V range is more like queen nine suited. So like, or would it be lower? I'm not sure. Maybe it's lower than that, but.
The cost of losing this hand also changes you from a guy who has doubled their stack to a guy who has ten more bigs than them. Right? That guy has thirty, has twenty eight bigs and you'll go down to uh forty four. You're in you're in much more danger than when you have fifty and he has twenty eight.
Yeah, I think the most profitable way to play chip leader spots, in my opinion, is apply a small aggression everywhere and then just fold in these spots like.
Hmm, hmm.
So did you see it's a call, but it's point zero five EV and aces would be one point seven five, so it's not even five percent of aces, meaning. Yeah, probably can skip it and.
Yeah, what's the EV of king queen off?
Be happy. King queen off is point one three, so about eight uh seven percent of aces.
So Nick, you'd fold king queen off here as well then, I assume?
Uh, king queen off is really close. It's miserable. Cuz you're beating a lot of king X then.
Might call king queen.
I was definitely going king queen. I mean, I might have been thinking about that.
Right, so close pop. I made the call. We lost.
Yeah, I wouldn't call. I wouldn't call that a fun.
It's just like, do you wanna take the variance or not?
It's costly and it's hard to know. You gotta just think, it really depends what you think their jamming range is. If you're doing good, good enough against it, you call. If not, you.
This is an easy fold.
And depends if you think you have an edge or not.
Easy fold. Seems close, man. I don't know.
No, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's close too. He's jamming worse aces for sure.
We're four handed. You gotta remember.
I think it's pretty close. I think it's still a fold, but I think it's, yeah, I don't think it's clear.
This is the hand.
We got scammed. Three X seems good. Jam.
Again?
Oh, my God. Here goes the heart. It starts racing.
Yeah, I was doing over this. I don't think I don't think this is a good jam.
That's a terrible call. Yeah, for them. Uh, yeah, it's not good.
It's like too middly. Like if this was like ace deuce, sure. But ace eight.
Yo.
I think his jam's fine.
You see it, Scotty?
I see it.
Over.
No, surely not. Surely not the snowman. Oh, no.
Yes.
I think this is where you can pull from.
Almost, oh.
That one was worth six K or eight K.
That's brutal, man.
Eight thousand dollar hand here.
Can you try to fold a soft danny? Cuz I think this is reasonable for him.
Huh?
He's big though, twenty six blinds.
Yeah, ace eight off.
I suppose it's good cuz like like what can Louis call with?
I don't think it's that good.
What does Louis call with ace ace nine O?
I think it's too much.
Yeah, he is a lot. Twenty six and a half.
It's better with like your crappy ace X, right? Like.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I don't think so.
I mean, in chippy in chippy V spots, you wanna call with, you wanna three bet your crappy aces and your best aces. I don't know. Here here might be different, but the middle aces you wanna call with cuz you just get them to call it better and fold out worse. Rebet, I think. I think he's fold. I think he should fold AC, honestly.
Yeah, be money. I think I think you broke that down well.
Ace A pure call.
Is it?
Oh, let's see the range, Johnny.
Range incoming.
Wanna share your screen or no?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was just gonna throw it in chat.
Share the screen. It's it's better.
All right, all right, yeah.
Okay, so ace nine off, ace seven off. So I mean, yeah, it's reasonable.
All the minds are agreeing it.
That's reasonable. It's in the it's in the region.
Hmm.
Jam, it's like just a little bit worse, yeah.
This, yeah, this is less chips.
Twenty three. No, it's the same. Oh, no. Oh, you're right. Yeah. So there's this one and then there's also this one seemed like it kind of matches as well. We can look at this.
No, I think I think the one we got is better, but.
Yeah, it's it's two, two and a half chips off. It's fine.
Hmm. This one, it is jamming. More ground to make up in this one, I think.
I thought he was.
From average stack.
I thought he was button. I thought they were button, I thought.
That was a big no. It was blind on mine. All right, can I give it back, Louis?
Yeah. So what happened from here is that the short stack double and I didn't double. I didn't lose anything. And then this is, do you think it's a jam from five big blinds here? I have a blocker, but he maybe not.
I would fold.
It's close.
Uh, I'm putting it in.
It's really close.
Where do you put it in if it's not this?
You can't wait for for a king or an ace.
I'd wanna try to see a couple more hands open. His ten big blind gets something they have to get involved with and busts.
Hmm.
Or we get the button within it. Like we get still like at least two high cards. Like I don't.
So low. The conflicting issues here are, one, you have no fold equity. Uh, and your hand is pretty terrible, but on the flip side, you're four handed, so you're gonna get blinded out very fast.
What do you think about just like limp folding? Limp folding versus jam?
No.
I don't wanna waste the chips.
You guys are just gonna put anything in.
He's gonna waste two in.
Wasting ten percent of your stack.
Yeah, I don't wanna waste the chips. I would just fold here and hope to get something decent on the button or cutoff.
Yeah.
I mean, percentage wise, it doesn't really matter. Like, if you jam, you or if you pick up one pot, you're increasing your chip chip stack by like over double that. I just don't know.
Here's how, here's how.
I think I shove this if you if I are a five.
We managed to find a first in spot. We're not gonna always find a first in spot. We have a queen in our hand.
The odds are your next three hands are gonna be bet, one of your next three hands is gonna be better for this and you can get it all in in one of your next three, including the next big blind.
If someone opens and you're looking at king ten, it's like not very good.
Wait, not than this.
With with five with five big blinds, you don't.
It's not. It's not better than this.
Yes, it is.
You have a queen high for five bigs against a random hand.
Yeah, queen five against a hundred percent of his range is pretty good.
Is it?
Yeah, it's prince.
Yeah.
I thought queen, I thought we needed like queen nine.
This is ten percent of aces. The equity here, it's so good.
Isn't queen seven like the computer where it's like?
Queen seven is the mid, it's the midpoint. We're below the midpoint. How does that?
Yeah, so half the time he's gonna have a worse hand. A little less than half.
I don't know. When I look at this, I don't really wanna put my chips in here because this chip leader is gonna be applying a lot of pressure to the other ten big blind guy. And uh I'm just gonna try to get a pay jump. I don't know if it's like better than putting it in fighting for your queen here. But I think that's what I would do.
Thinking about that mana, when we jam here, he should let us have this pot a lot so he can apply pressure to the other people.
No, they won't. They they won't though.
No, but like he shouldn't take this spot with a marginal hand, right? Like king queen's gonna call off, but. Right? You should pass a lot of marginal spots here.
He's gonna play pretty close to a chippy V because like it's basically zero risk premium.
So when he calls, we're doing worse. We we're not gonna double up as often if he's gonna play like Peter suggests, which I don't disagree with honestly, but if that's what he's doing, then we're not gonna get any easy doubles.
Uh, we should, you should take off the um filtered for hands that VPip and go look at the fold you made cuz there were some folds I would never fold.
Hmm, that would be interesting too.
Like at this final four. Like you folded ace six off from the cutoff a few hands ago with like seven big blinds, I think.
Hmm, I would jam that.
Interesting.
You what do you mean?
No, from the cutoff.
Feels close, man.
I was watching you playing. You folded a fold I never would have done. Or you folded a hand I never would have folded.
Yourself down to the ten big blind spots and then run it from there.
It's not the same. You had like six or seven big blinds in the cutoff. And you folded an offsuit ace.
Wait, this one's close too. What do you do here? I think I would open.
I'm just piling here. I would just open rep.
Aye, aye, aye. You guys are blasters. Show me stacks again.
More effective.
You guys just wanna punt it off, man.
Yep, I'm on the short stack. I got ace black or on the butt. I'm gonna open the button. I'm jamming a crappy ace. I mean, I'm not too excellent. I peeled one card and I saw an ace. That's all I need, Danny.
Is this the the hand you're talking about, Nick?
Yeah, I'm jamming here.
Oh, you called fold. You called fold here.
If you fold, he folds. This guy has a jamming range, right?
What?
He does. But um you you dip into the danger zone if you let the blinds pass one more time.
Yeah, it's like you're so, so low here and you're gonna get blinded out so quickly. You're just not gonna get a better opportunity.
Well, it's just one of those things. If you let an orbit go by and you have four big blinds, you 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 lose a significant amount of fold equity, I think, compared to like almost seven.
He's four handed as well, which makes this even better cuz like he hasn't folded like shitty cards.
So you guys think this is a go, right?
I would go.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
No, 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 I wouldn't jam. I wouldn't jam. Make it make it five big blinds.
Yeah, the soldier goes for four big blinds here.
Yeah, might as well go for this one than two ends later, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So. Yeah, but don't jam. Make it like five.
When I say jam, I'm saying effectively jam.
Yeah.
Our range for the the ace five is there.
The ace five, which is.
The one we just looked at.
Yeah. On 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 that ace spot, instead of actually jamming, do you do that? Leave yourself one big blind and that way if somebody jams and someone else calls, you fold for the pay jump?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You bothered to do that? Okay, I know, I know.
I think our range is gonna be even wider than this because uh they're deeper in um the actual game.
I agree.
So put five big blinds in here.
Yeah.
Yep, four or five.
All right.
Then the ace six on the button is below it. Or you just wanna ram it home.
All right.
For what it's worth, we should probably look at whatever we're reviewing these study sessions, look at all the hands on a final table because ICM is so relevant. There's some big folds that you don't normally make.
Yeah.
So if you're shooting, you're not gonna see those.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, that makes sense, especially on the final table.
All right, well, that was a nice little hand mystery.
It was.
Yeah, well played.
Good job, Louis.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, good job.
How much you win with this one?
Uh, six K.
Did you? How much of yourself did you have?
Oh, that's the best part, Lewis. How much do you think I have?
I know how much you had. I checked the staking lobby and you weren't there, so.
You you say five percent, Ken?
No, man, he had all of it. He had every penny of it.
All a hundo percent.
Everything. I laid the list there.